Okay. I'd like to call to order the business meeting, the Penn Tucket Regional School Committee, for March 15th, 2016. Let's see, Wayne Adams is here. I am here. Doug Jalina is absent. Lisa O'Connor is here. Brian Page is absent. Chris Redding is here. Chris Wile is absent. Jack Bolet is absent. And Andy Murphy is here. Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the United States of America, through the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Okay, we have just a couple amendments to the agenda. The first is the 7 o'clock School Committee Student Representative Report. We're not going to have that tonight. The second is that Agenda Item F, the Whittier Update, we won't be having that tonight. And the third is that we'd like to add one item to the agenda at the end, I guess it would be H, which is we need an update on the superintendent's evaluation.
From Wayne.
From Wayne. All right, so any discussion, any other discussion on the agenda? All right, motion to approve the amended agenda?
So moved.
Second? Okay, all in favor? Okay. All right, so on to the minutes. So can I have a motion to approve the business meeting minutes of January 19th, 2016?
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right. Can I have a motion to approve the Business Finance and Operations Minutes of February 2nd?
So moved. Second.
Yes, any discussion? All right, all in favor? All right. Motion to approve the Communications Subcommittee Meeting Minutes of February 2nd?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Motion to approve the Business Meeting Minutes of February 23rd?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Oh, discussion, any discussion? All right, all in favor? And finally, can I have a motion to approve the Communications Subcommittee Meeting Minutes of March 1st?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Great. Okay, next is public comment. Is there any members of the public who would like to comment? Okay. On to the superintendent's report. Jeff?
Yeah, so for tonight, I wanted to introduce to all of you Russ Marino. He's our new principal, starting in July, over at Merrimack. And Russ, why don't you come on up and join us? This will provide an opportunity for us to just hear a little bit from Russ about his background and experiences, what he's looking forward to. Russ has already visited the school, met some students and teachers, and the PTO there also hosted kind of a get-to-know-you meeting at night, in the evening. So Russ, why don't you begin by just letting us know who you are, you know, what's attractive about Penn Tucket to you?
Absolutely. So go back to the very beginning. I'm a Haverhill, born and raised, currently reside, so you know, I've grown up very familiar with Penn Tucket as a student, especially at the high school, competing against Penn Tucket regional sports teams and with, you know, members of the Penn Tucket regional baseball team on the local Legion ball. So I've always been familiar with Penn Tucket, and I've always known Penn Tucket to have a very, very good reputation. So, you know, through the interview process, you talk about a lot of things, but the thing I like to emphasize is I wasn't really looking for a position. You know, I'm a principal in Bill Ricker right now, elementary school, K to 5, and I've been there for five years, and it's really been an extraordinary experience. We've made a significant amount of progress in making a difference in kids' lives, and I think the results are starting to really show in our accountability data. Our PARC scores of past years have been quite good. We've really changed the way we think about education and make sure that, you know, we form high expectations for kids. We make sure that the instruction is explicit and solid, and we've worked really hard to reform the things that we're doing. So, you know, I wasn't really looking until you find a position that's really a perfect fit. So, you know, my experience is kind of varied, more so than I think many people in the field of education. I started out as a middle school instructional technology teacher, grades 5 through 8, in Haverhill at John Granley Whittier Middle School, and I became a high school history teacher, grades 9 through 11, and I was there for about five years. So really enjoyed being in the classroom. I consider myself a person of high standard and expected my students to achieve a high standard and worked hard for that. But Haverhill was an interesting place for my wife and I. My wife's also a teacher. She's a, right now, she's a elementary school literacy specialist in Haverhill. She's been a high school teacher and elementary school teacher as well, so we have a lot of interesting conversations about the work that we do. But at the time, we're both Haverhill-born and raised of educator families. So back in 2007, we were two of 19 members of our families working and living in Haverhill. So that combined with the fact that we were working with our former teachers in Haverhill High School was sort of suffocating as a life experience. So at the time, my wife and I, who had a two-year-old at home, we decided we wanted to take a break from reality. So we applied to 145 schools in Western Europe because we wanted to live and work internationally for just a year, just a chance to take a breather and get away and really enjoy what Europe had to offer for us. It was a perfect time for us. So we were fortunate to be offered positions in a beautiful little town in Germany called Beimar, at a very small K to 12 international school, providing international baccalaureate programming for elementary school with the PYP, the high school with the diploma program. And I was hired as a 6th, 7th, and 8th grade history and English teacher. We arrived on August 3rd. Just before we left, I was an acting assistant principal at Haverhill High School, grades 11 and 12. And we arrived on August 3rd, and on September 8th, I was called into a board meeting for an impromptu interview session, and I was quickly offered the position of head of school and principal of a K to 12 school in a country where I couldn't speak the language and an international model that I couldn't spell. So it was really kind of a whirlwind experience professionally. It was really incredible. It was probably the best learning I've ever engaged in through my undergraduate, my graduate programs, even my doctoral program now. I've never learned more than I learned in the two years that we were there. So when they offered me the position, they asked to extend the contract for an extra year, maybe up to five, with the idea that I would be the leader of the school. And that was really where I developed a passion for two things. I developed a passion for the international baccalaureate model of instruction for kids and the opportunities that the constructivist model of inquiry provides for students. But I also developed a passion for elementary school. You know, I hadn't been in an elementary school before, so just the idea, simply learning how an elementary school operates and how an elementary school teacher thinks were incredible experiences for me. So, you know, it was a two-year experience of great learning. I really developed a passion for the IB, the PYP in the bottom and the diploma program at the top. They're extraordinary transformative models of education for kids that I hadn't experienced yet, because it's not common here, as I'm sure you guys know at this point. So, and we were there for two years. At the start of our second year, we found out MAVE was coming. So I have a 10-year-old daughter and a 6-year-old daughter now. When we arrived in Germany, we had a 2 and 1/2-year-old. When we left, we had a 4 and 1/2-year-old and a 3-month-old. The reality was that we didn't want to have both of us working full-time in a foreign country without a support network with a newborn. So that was really the impetus for our return home. So we came back home, and since then, I've been an elementary school leader for a year in Haverhill as an assistant principal and for five years since as the principal in Bill Ricker. So it's really been a whirlwind of experiences over the last 10 years since my first daughter was born. Where I'm at now, it's a K to 12 school, roughly the student population of that in Merrimack. We have a program for children with autism. We have about 34 students in our district-wide program for autism, which is another commonality with what we're doing in Merrimack. So, you know, when I'm talking with people that I know well now, and they say, "Why did you want to move?" I said, "Well, if you take my resume and you circle all of the things that I've loved best about my career over the last 10 years, and you create a job description, that's what exists here in Merrimack, and it happens to be the schools that are geographically closest to my house outside of Haverhill." It was really kind of a, such a coincidence and such a, it's sort of like it was meant to be almost, you know, in that it has the IB, PYP, one of only four schools in Massachusetts attempting to implement PYP. The others are hours away. It has the program for children with autism, and it provides me an extra 120 hours per year, every afternoon, to spend with my kids. So, you know, it really is a perfect combination of everything that I've wanted and I've hoped for in my career at really a perfect time. So I'm really excited to get started. You know, I did have a chance last week to meet the members of parent community at the PTO meeting. I spent the whole day there last Tuesday. Really, I got to meet some students, the 5th grade peer mentors. I spent about an hour with them, and they had a chance to ask me whatever they wanted to ask me about me. It was great. They had the best questions out of the whole day. I got to meet the majority of teachers. I met all of the classroom teachers and some of the specialists, and I'm looking forward to building the relationships over the next couple of months, because there's some pretty heavy lifting to go. You know, trying to achieve the PYP in the way that we're trying to do it here is not easy, and I think that a lot of the success will come from the relationships that we have together there. So looking forward to the next few months. The process was nice and early, so it gives us a lot of time to foster relationships and get to know people. So really looking forward to get started, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about me or my background or really anything.
Anybody?
You guys are easy.
So I just have a question. So how do you think it's the best way to get the community to engage or fully accept the IB program over in Merrimack?
I think that's a great, great question. I think it's going to be, it will be one of the more important steps that we take over the next, you know, three to five years or so. I think the most important thing is to make sure the community within the school intimately understands what we're doing, so that when parents ask, they're able to answer the questions of, "How is this different? What will it provide to my children? And how will it give them a different view of what education should be in the world around them?" So that's where it really, really has to start, and that's the work that they've started, you know, over the last couple of years that will really continue over the next two. Then I think it comes down to communicating as frequently and as varied as possible. So in-person opportunities to share the principles of the IB, you know, paper examples, whether it's newsletters or the weekly reports that we'll send out, or different opportunities so we can communicate in writing what the principles of the IB are. I think in the years to come, a really significant part of what the IB wants kids to become is internationally-minded global citizens, which is a hard thing for people around here to develop, because we're so, people around the world, I use the word provincial. You know, we are a state that thinks highly of our ability to teach kids. We're not a particularly heterogeneous internationally cultured group. So providing authentic international experiences for kids, so that they can go home and start talking about it, and sharing with families, different parts of international access are going to be important, from personal experiences of international travel to making connections, maybe with colleagues and friends of mine who are already teachers in international schools, for pen pals or for collaborative activities with the modern access that we have now through Skype and FaceTime and very internet access. We can connect kids in classrooms across the globe, and I have friends in 15 different countries that are possibly places that I can reach out to to make those connections. So it's not going to be something people understand next week or even next year, but I think over time, being able to communicate openly and regularly and in different ways will give them an idea. So, you know, there's the part of instruction, which is teaching kids how to take responsibility for their learning, have high expectations for themselves, inquire, and being able to develop the skills of knowledge acquisition for themselves, as opposed to the traditional teacher-fed knowledge. That's going to be important, helping parents understand what that is. The learner profile is a really intimate component of the international baccalaureate deal, so making sure the parents understand what that is and, you know, what we do at home. You know, with our kids, we actually have the IB profile on our fridge, and every week we pick one of the profile components and talk to our kids about it, encourage them to pursue it and encourage them to live it, and then we talk about it every night at dinner or every Friday, review the week, and how did we live that profile component. So leading parents to understand how they can do these things at home, like my wife and I are doing for our kids.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, thanks for joining us tonight, Russ. Russ will be around occasionally, and I wanted to make sure you all knew him and got to meet him.
Yeah, Jeff has my contact information, if any of you would like to ask me questions or get to know me. I'm sure he can pass that along to you folks.
Definitely. Great. Thanks a lot. Have a good night.
Thank you. All right. So first, under new business, is the Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan? Jeff, would you like to move this?
Sure. So every two years, we're required to update our plan, and I provided you with a copy of the updated plan that I'm presenting to you tonight for your consideration. The process involves gathering information from parents, staff members, and from students. And it was very helpful to hear from some parents, one in particular, through some experiences he had. A student who actually came to a parent meeting conveyed a situation that they had been through, and it was very helpful in making some fine-tuned edits to our plan. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Our attorney has looked at it, and I feel confident about recommending it to you tonight for approval.
Any questions?
Only a comment, since it's pretty much the same document, some fine tuning, and the attorney has looked it over, then I don't know why we don't go along with it, since it's patented after the states anyways.
Yeah, sure.
Any, yeah, do you want to make a motion, then?
I made a motion, we accept it the way it is.
Okay. I'll second, and then I'd just like to continue with discussion. Would you mind highlighting what changes were made?
Definitely. So in some of the parent feedback that I got, they were asking about what kinds of ongoing supports could be included in the plan as a reference for students who are not the subject of bullying. So as part of an investigation, the principal determines, is this report an issue of bullying or not? And in many cases, it's not an issue of bullying, but that doesn't mean that there's not conflict or something that needs some support. So we included in it on page 7, counseling and support services are available for all students. Students experiencing conflict or other sources of undue stress may need support, including regular monitoring and intervention. Parents can access supports for their children by contacting the school principal. So in that way, we're able to make a reference for those students who aren't having an issue around bullying, but still are experiencing some kind of stress and could use some additional support. So that's one of the updates. Another is that you would find a couple of references to students becoming familiar with lunch and recess supervisors and aides. Some of the feedback I got was that there may be adults outside or at lunchtime, but there's not necessarily a connection. So if a student's experiencing some kind of conflict, they may not know exactly what to do or who to go to. So we included that as a reference, too.
Any other discussion? Chris?
Just on the point that you just made, I think that's important, because I've heard from kids, I mean, I still have one in elementary, and they don't know necessarily the monitors, because sometimes it changes and one of the aides has to sub in for some, you know, so I think that that's, almost if they could post something in the cafeteria, you know, who's on today, who's on today, you know, something that it's very tangible for the kids who might need that help, you know. I think some of the kids just go to the adult, but some need that connection before they would be willing to go to the adult.
Yeah, so in the plan, we want to make sure that students actually have a connection with the adult, so it's not some disconnect, you know, like report to the adult. We want to make sure that they actually know who the people are who we're supervising, and we think that that will help to, you know, engage anybody with a difficulty with the appropriate adult. So, you know, we'll take those steps to make sure that kids know who to go to, and like Russ was just saying, the relationships are really important, and if there's not a relationship between the adult and the student, then the student may not know what to do or who to go to.
And so how is that going to be done?
Principals will take care of that.
Okay.
Yeah, so this doesn't direct what to do, but it says this has to be done.
Okay. Okay. Lisa?
I just wanted to thank Dr. Wilkman for, you know, asking for everybody's input, you know, because I think it was well perceived.
Oh, good.
And it's good to see that it's in hand.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Just ask a question, just probably a dumb question, but what do we tell parents if there's a case of bullying and it's between two students, but it's not, you know, within the parameters of this Section 7A, where it's either on school grounds or using, you know, cyberbullying, using equipment from the school? What if it's just they live in the same neighborhood and other kid's beating up on the other one all the time?
Well, the school has jurisdiction over what it controls.
Yeah.
And so a parent who's having some difficulties outside of what we could control could always go to the police department and report it there. You know, what we don't want to do is set up schools as the clearinghouse for everybody to come to, because that's not appropriate in all cases.
Right.
I'm thinking of a case where we had a sort of like an after-school activity that wasn't really a school-sponsored activity, and the school took on the, a component of helping that organization to know what to do. So it's not that we just disconnect.
Yeah.
We try to help as best we can, but we're not the clearinghouse for everybody, that's for sure.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, all in favor of, let me see, the Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan? All right, next on the agenda is a discussion regarding the school resource officer. Jeff, would you like to take that?
Sure, yeah. So this is kind of an interesting opportunity that's come up just since the new police chief has been hired over in West Newbury. So Art and I have gotten to know each other pretty quickly and share a lot of the same thinking. He has some experience with the SRO in his background, and I have worked with school resource officers as well, not in Massachusetts, but in Connecticut. And he has come to me saying that he's approached the town, you know, for a third shift person, and there may be some opportunity there for a portion of that to be dedicated to the school as a school resource officer here in West Newbury. So I said that I would introduce the concept here, and we have literally just talked briefly about it. I think it would be, as I think you gained, you got from the description I provided in the report, I think you got the idea that it may be, you know, a really good thing for us to pursue. I don't know what it looks like, feels like, sounds like at this point, because it's so new, but I think it would be worth pursuing, and I wanted to introduce the concept to you here. So that, you know, that's all I have for you for right now, but I think it would be an interesting thing to think about and to see what develops.
Anybody have any questions?
Not a question, but a comment. I know that when I taught at Bagnall back in the late 90s, the DARE officer used to come in, and I used to think that that was so fabulous, because in addition to the material that they were covering, they also got to know the kids, and they got to know the kids in the community, and the kids got to know them before they got in trouble later on, you know, and met them that way. So I think having somebody, I'm assuming it would be more for the middle school, high school ages.
Pretty typically, yeah.
I think it's a fabulous idea, because then the police become a partner in the education instead of the person you go to when you're in trouble, or, you know, I think it's a great idea. I know Newbury Port has a program.
Wayne?
I was just going to make a comment, several do. Amesbury does as well, former student. That seems to have worked out real well, so consequently, for us to take a real solid look at it, why not?
Yeah, so Art and I will continue to have a conversation. I'll bring back any updates, and, you know, we'll see where it goes.
Anybody else? Okay. Let's see, next, we need a discussion and ultimately an approval on the out-of-state field trip for the high school. Jeff, do you want to?
I do, I'd like to go through that.
Okay.
So...
Do we want to make a motion first?
Yeah, I can, I can make a motion to approve the out-of-state field trip to New York for the high school.
Second.
Any discussion? Jeff?
Yeah, so you may recall that a while back, you authorized me to approve out-of-state school trips unless there was an overnight involved. So when I went back to look at the policy, when this came to me, when we last updated the policy, I included the last line of the policy, which read that the school committee has to approve the field trip. So here we are back again. It's my error, it's my typographical error when I presented it to you last time. So we can, I can go back and update that for you and bring it forward at another time, but for right now, it's the policy, and we'll need your approval. So Mike Smith is proposing a trip over to New York City with a few students from the chorus, and it's on a Saturday, they're going to be taking the day to go to Staten Island, taking a Broadway show, you know, the usual kinds of things that you'd expect from a trip with the chorus. And, you know, he's got all of the insurance that is required by the policy, and he'll actually be driving a van down with chaperones and a couple of kids. So pretty typically, I would have approved this already, but because of that line, I think it's about three or four words, that were edited the last time, you know, I'm bringing it back to you.
Any other discussion questions? Okay. All in favor of approving the field trip? So next on the agenda is the school calendar. So when I looked over the school calendar, I noticed a couple things that have to be edited.
You did?
I'm sure everybody noticed.
You did.
So I think everybody probably noticed a couple, so how do we do this? Should we make a motion to approve the agenda, or should we?
Well, here's what you could do.
Yeah.
So what are the kinds of things that you found? How about, let's start with Chris Redding. What are the kinds of things?
Well, April 30th is stars or paths or something like that.
Oh, it's been corrected.
Okay. Actually, I had a question. So the early release, there's like three, maybe four dates where it's a three-hour, instead of typically it's an hour and a half. So I'd just like to better understand that change.
Sure, I think that's a really great question. So when I went around to talk with staff, the big emphasis that I got was that 90 minutes goes by in a heartbeat, and we don't really get that much done. They want more time, more time to devote greater amounts of work, and the, on the other hand, in the contract, there are only 30 hours that can be devoted to the professional development. So we had to figure out a way of balancing the 30 hours with the numbers of hours that we were providing on any given day. So that's where the additional time comes in for a couple of days, but if you look in February, it's only a 90-minute early release. That's our annual celebration day, and the 90 minutes actually works out really well on, I think it's February 17th.
17th.
Right. So that's the explanation for the added amount of time for professional development. That was coming from teachers, but it's a fairly common criticism, I think, that comes up in school systems, where you may have a high frequency of professional development for short amounts of time, but it goes so quickly that you can't really get much done. Does that help?
It helps. It, I think, becomes a burden on some working parents. It, I think, becomes a burden on some working parents, especially, an hour and a half is one thing, to be able to be home earlier or set up. I think the parents who have to deal with Thanksgiving, well, the day before Thanksgiving's usually easy, but then the two December days for conferences, and just seeing the frequency of, I know it's around long weekends, and so maybe it's, I just think, I worry that parents are going to have a hard time dealing with this, and I think typically we don't offer after-school support on those days, or do we?
Before and after-school is still offered.
For those earlier release.
Yep, for early release days.
So it would just be the parents whose children aren't part of that program.
Yep, and it's really only a couple of days. It's, so we've always had the conference days.
Right, yep.
Those have always been at that time.
Right.
So it would be the day in, the day in October, October 7th, right?
Before Christmas, March, and before.
Before Christmas is a half-day anyway.
Not usually, it's usually a full day.
Okay, then we have, February is a 90-minute, March is the, is the half-day, and May is a half-day.
Right.
So for professional development, it's October, March, and May.
Right, so three out of two days.
Three days, right.
And how does that, I always question how that works for our time in learning, you know?
Oh, we have plenty of hours, so that's not going to impact it. We're shifting our hours, we're not increasing the hours. So we've cut out another day. We don't have a day in January that we used to have.
Normally typically we used to, okay.
Yep, there was a request for the day in May because the prom is also linked to it, and rather than students leaving, they have permission to leave because we won't be in session. It works out, yeah.
Do you have other?
Did you have other things, Chris?
No, though, that was, that was the only issues I saw.
How about you, Joanna, what kinds of things?
Mine are more editorial in that, like, on 8/31 and 9/1, I'm a little.
I got it.
Okay, you got that already. And then, did you mark on 11/24 and 11/25 that there is no school on this because it doesn't say that, you know, that's for Thanksgiving? So we have it marked.
You know what it is, it's really hard to add, this is the unfriendlyest, but I'll do what I can.
It was there before, on last year's calendar, you said 11/24, the two Thanksgiving days, you had it marked down actually as no school.
So yours are more editorial, not about the.
And the rest of them are editorial.
Not about the days, right?
Could you take the 11/28 out and make it 11/23, 24 closed?
Well, we can do that on our own time.
This stuff's editorial.
Yeah.
I got those from Lisa.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we'll, we'll take your, we'll take a look at your list, but yours is not editing the days, right?
Nope, nope. Okay, so really, there's not an amended or calendar to approve, we're really just approving the existing calendar.
That's right.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the school calendar for the 2016, 2017 school year. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Let's see, next, school choice. I'm just going to pull this up.
Do you want an explanation before you have a motion?
Sure, that would be great.
All right, so I'll just offer an explanation before the motion.
Yeah.
Each spring, the State Department requires that a school committee take action on whether to continue being a member of the school choice program. So the school choice program offers students from outside to come in and allows our students to go to other school choice programs. Typically, the school committee in Penntucket has approved being a member of that program, and that allows our students to go to other school choice programs as they would like to. Another part of this is that you all are required to vote on any open seats, as recommended by the superintendent. And you can see here that I am not recommending any open seats for the upcoming year, and the rationale that I provided was that there's a gap between the $5,000 per seat that comes to us as opposed to the actual per pupil cost. And the other is that our current size, class size projections wouldn't support my recommending that we boost up, you know, our enrollment. So for those two reasons, I would recommend that you vote to approve membership in school choice, but that you do not approve seats for the upcoming school year. So that would be the motion that I'd recommend to you.
So you don't approve, we don't approve additional seats?
Yeah, we don't approve seats for new students in school choice for the upcoming school year.
So do we, I think other years, we've had to say the, like, if we have, I don't know how many we have right now.
We have about 100 students.
So then we have to say for the 100, I think other years we've had.
No, those 100 students are going to be our students until they graduate or until they decide to leave. These are only new seats for the upcoming school year.
So to not go beyond 100 choice students?
It's actually just that you would approve my recommendation that we not open school seats, the school choice seats for the upcoming school year.
So if students, the graduating students who are holding a choice seat would not get replaced by younger?
That's right, that's right.
So we're decreasing our numbers.
That's right, exactly.
So I'll make a motion, then, to approve membership in school choice, but not approve any new seats for.
The 2016-17.
Yeah, for the 2016, 2017 school year.
Yeah.
There's a second.
Just wondering if those should be separate? I don't mind voting them together, but I'm not, I'm wondering if they should be separate.
We can do the separate motions, okay, so I'll make it.
For the people that aren't here.
Do I have to?
So we have them here. Joanna, we have them, I wrote them two.
Okay, perfect. You know, I handed mine with the calendar.
I know, I'll hand you mine.
Thank you, okay. I will make a motion.
To approve the recommendation.
To approve the recommendation of the superintendent that the district continue participating in the school choice program. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that? All in favor? And then I'll make a second motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation that no additional seats for new school choice students be approved for the 2016, 2017 school year. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that? All in favor?
No with your update.
So then we, we had a request to start videotaping the school committee, subcommittee meetings, and we said we'd bring it up here at the school committee meeting for discussion. I would like to refer it to the communications subcommittee for discussion.
Okay.
If that is acceptable.
So I would like to say that I don't understand why it has to go to another subcommittee to, because essentially, we're delaying starting to videotape this, and I think there's things that are being discussed at the subcommittee level now that would be beneficial for people to be able to see if they can't come to the meetings. I think there's one big topic that's coming up.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I'm not sure what we would discuss, other than, yeah, let's vote on it.
Or send it to the full committee, I don't, I don't know.
That's actually being sent to the full committee in April.
What?
That topic.
No, I know, but I'm just saying that I don't know why a subcommittee has to vote on this, only to refer it to the full committee at a future date. Why the full committee at this point in time can't vote on it? I mean, personally, I don't, I don't see why it hasn't been done all along. We have to provide minutes for it, we provide videotapes online for our full business meetings, and I think that there are discussions taking place at the subcommittee levels, both the finance one, I think, I personally think that some of the discussion we had at that first finance meeting about our budget challenges this year never necessarily got repeated at the full committee level. So I think having that available to the public would have been a big benefit for people, in addition to other things.
Lisa?
I have a couple of things to add. I think the subcommittee minute, the meetings are informal, which is nice because it's more like a think tank, where everybody can just add everything in. And when they become more formal, you might not have all those ideas put out on the table. And it is open to the public, so anybody can come to them and minutes are taken.
But there's occasionally people who can't make it there, as there is for here, and there's quite a few people who do watch online.
And my second concern, and I'm not positive for this, I would need clarification, but I assume that there's a charge for meetings to be taped, so that's going to up the budget.
Could we get an answer to that second question?
I mean, obviously, we have a stipend for the individuals, but it's not an honor or stipend that would, you know, should be, I wouldn't make that part of the decision. I mean, if it's, you have to come up with a couple thousand, that's fine, there's some things dropping off going forward, that would be, we could take care of it.
Andy had his hand up.
Yeah, I, I think I agree with taping them, I think, or videoing them. There are important things discussed at those meetings. Jen needs to cover stuff for the newspaper, and sometimes she has conflicting things. It's helpful for her to be able to see videos of those meetings when big things are being discussed. I just think in the interest of transparency, it's the same thing as videoing this meeting. I think we ought to video those.
Okay. Anybody? I had one thing I was going to say, anybody else? So it's my opinion that I don't think the subcommittee meetings would, should be taped. I think that they will function best if they're allowed to continue in their current format. The reason is that I feel like subcommittee meetings tend to more often be brainstorming sessions, and I'm afraid that people might hold back a little bit if they start to feel like they might be subjected to, like, Monday morning quarterbacking, you know, for throwing out what is maybe a bad idea in hindsight, but which was just put forth as, hey, here's, here's an idea. So the information flow generated during these meetings, which are quite interactive, I think is key to these meetings being productive. And my concern is that if we allow the videotaping, the video, you know, the meeting participants will start to hold back a little bit. And in addition, when we have an issue where we need to reach out to the public, we use the subcommittee meetings as a venue for those. And I'm also afraid that public participants might start to feel like they don't want to throw out ideas if they think that their neighbors might be watching it on a videotape, and, you know, they don't have a chance to explain themselves if somebody is not right there to ask them a question. And finally, while there are only limited opportunities for the public to interact with us at these business meetings, the subcommittee meetings are designed to encourage public interaction, and I'm concerned that videotaping could lead to a reduction in public participation at the meetings, if people feel like they can just get the information by watching it. So that's just my opinion that I offer, I just wanted to put it out there, so.
Can I suggest that people who would stay home to watch it aren't going to interact to begin with? If they want to say something, they're going to come in. And I think we're sort of predicting what the behavior is going to be. I mean, we know for a fact that people can't watch it on video, so, do we want people to know what's going on in subcommittee meetings or not? That's what this is going to come down to.
Well, and I think that, I think that the level of discussion at the subcommittee meeting should be as important and not necessarily formal necessarily, but I think, open to the public and let it be known. I mean, I think there's a lot of things that are being discussed since we've started this new, because this didn't, before Dr. Mulqueen came, we had two business meetings a month, both were taped, videotaped, so we were paying that stipend, so it's not something that hasn't been taken on before. And I think that perhaps they, the subcommittee meetings should be looked at as formal ways to discuss business. I mean, it's one of our meetings that we do a month, whether whichever school committee we're on, or subcommittee we're on. And I just feel that there's a lot of information. I think you look at a number of the policies that went through, the use of facilities, the foreign field trips, and there's so many things that have been discussed at that level that people are completely unaware of. And I don't think that it's because people are staying home and not wanting to come take part, I think that they just don't know what's happening. And I think that any way that we can get the public more informed, more educated, more part of the system, I don't see why we wouldn't want to do that.
Okay, Wayne?
Well, Joanna makes a lot of good points, it makes sense. However, I'm a little bit torn between the two. However, for complete transparency, and for everyone in the public to have full opportunity to either get involved, watch, or hear, that's why we came up with Andy's communication, I'm all for it, we should probably do it. So this enables people that do want to get involved to do so, and if they can, it gives them an option at home to take a look. So I'd be inclined to go along with the full transparency and the greatest amount of options for the public.
Okay.
So I'd like to make a motion that we begin videotaping subcommittees as of the next subcommittee meeting day.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
This wasn't, this wasn't up for vote.
Oh, well, it wasn't for discussion.
I need advice on.
The item was listed for discussion only for tonight, so.
We have to bring it back to the next meeting.
I would say you'd probably want to bring it back to the next meeting for a vote.
And it's another positive thing about it, there'll be four other people that are going to be able to absorb it and decide on their own for them to have the vote as well. So since it is just discussed and we're missing four members, that might be the way to go.
Okay.
I disagree with that. I think, I think, I think the sooner we get that information available to more of the public, I think the better we are, especially with the number of discussions that are going to be taking place about a high school project. And I just think so many people have no idea what's going on, that anything we can give them to get them better informed is better. And I'm very disappointed that it didn't say to vote on that tonight. I never, in my mind, thought that we would push it back to a subcommittee. I didn't think that would ever make sense. And had I known that, I would have requested that we took a vote on it tonight.
So it'll go into discussion for the next committee meeting?
Yeah.
For approval?
Sure.
Okay. Okay.
Just the motion.
So.
Just not voted.
Just not voted, yeah.
I'd like to go on record as saying I'm very disappointed in this, that this didn't get taken care of tonight, so we can start doing it immediately.
Okay. Okay, and the last item, superintendent evaluation, Wayne, if you would like to.
Yeah, we're going to pass out to you, thanks to Mary Ann, and thanks to Dr. Mulqueen. He did his job for the state again, and did his half-year self-evaluation, and he did it a little differently this year. He introduced us with a 2015-16 summary of what was done and what we've been working on for the system. But the, it's going to be the same evaluation format as the last two years. So consequently, we're still going to have our four standards to take a look at, with the 20 indicators and 40 elements that everyone on the board will have to take a look at. I would like to come up with a date tonight. It was brought to our attention a couple of meetings ago, that's probably a good idea to get these in and compiled before the school board changes in the spring, which is a good idea. I know three years ago, when we did it, one member head left, and I actually gave it to her for input, to accommodate what she had experienced, to evaluate the superintendent for that. As far as total compilation, I don't know why it can't be done in timely fashion before there's a change on the board. But ultimately, the most important thing is there's two members on the board that may not be with us, that they do indeed get that chance to evaluate and get it back to. Last year, I threw out a date of a two-week time, and I thought that was in a timely fashion. We didn't make it. And nor the year before. There's several of you on the board now that are really putting the evidence down. I would ask you to do the same, because that's what the state really would like to see. They don't want to see a lot of flower, they'd like to see evidence. And Dr. Mulqueen definitely has put this out forward for us to use as a refresher on what has been accomplished over the year, to use that possibly as a reference, or nothing more to stimulate you with what we've done, for valid evidence for the state. So with all that said, we've got four people missing tonight, so I'm going to ask Mary Ann to call on to those, that they can be picked up by her. The people that are present tonight. The people that are present tonight, the amount of work you put into it for evidence is quite lengthy, it's time consuming. So if I said if I need it for tomorrow, you're not going to be able to do it really. Is a two-week period to you people sound way overboard. I know I got three in last year, the two weeks probably, probably wasn't even enough and now there's two weeks is plenty.
The next school committee is the 2018-2016. Is that when you want to go over the results?
I'd like to have them passed into you or I before that.
Right.
And, and had Jack been here tonight, Lisa and Jack and I will meet as a precursor to how we're going to do things. So again, we'll have a compilation of results coming into our second meeting. For those who, since I'm, I'm a technological luddite, I'm a terrible typer, if you can type out your evidence in the form of supporting the elements and send them to Mary Ann, that way I will indeed have them when I compile them. Does that sound fair?
Yeah.
There's several people here who work very hard on them and if you, who wants to do them out twice, they hand me, if you could do it once and send them right to Mary Ann, we've got, the only thing I asked you is to put in front of each one of your comments to validate one of the points is to identify it. Last year, we had a couple of people that didn't know how they applied, so I went through everybody's comments and I applied them. So if you don't know, leave a blank, I'll apply it to each one. But if you do know, if you could say standard one, indicator B and element four, that'd be great, all right? That would make the whole job of compiling nine people what is.
What's the date you want to go?
Well, what do you guys think? Today is the what, 15th?
So two weeks from today would be the...
I think April 1st is a Friday.
April 1st?
Yeah, it's just over two weeks from today, April 1st. April 1st would be just over two weeks from today.
April 1st would be good for me, but I need it to be good for you. Is April 1st good for the four people that are present? Not to all shoot for. And you can, as always, the previous four years, if there's any problems or anything else, I definitely will be available at any time you say. You might even get breakfast out of it, Jack has twice.
Okay, any other questions for Wayne on the superintendent's evaluation?
Excuse me?
I just did, any questions for Wayne on the superintendent's evaluation? Okay, then a motion to adjourn?
And this, this is available online somewhere too, I think last year I did it online.
I think so, this won't be the part that Jeff...
No, not that part, the other part.
That will be online.
Thank you.
All right, can I have a motion to adjourn? Someone, second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Okay, it's 7:25.